Good morning and welcome to the official start of the 2021-22 school year. I now call to order the organizational meeting of the Newport News School Board for Thursday, July 1, 2021. On behalf of the members of the school board, I welcome each of you present and those joining us electronically. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. The purpose of this meeting is to approve organizational matters as required by the Code of Virginia. I am opening the meeting because the term of the school board chairman expired on midnight of June 30. As customary, the superintendent opens the meeting and leads the first organizational meeting until the board appoints a chairman. We will begin the meeting with an invocation and pledge. Here to do the honors is our 2021-2022 Division-wide Teacher of the Year, Mitzi Emblech. Mrs. Emblech is a music teacher at Riverside Elementary School with 19 years of experience. During virtual learning, she worked tirelessly to ensure all of her students received music instruction. She made sure that every fourth and fifth grader had a recorder to play at home and her elementary drum line rehearsed remotely using practice pads and sticks she provided. Thank you for joining us, Mrs. Emblech, and we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good morning, Dr. Parker, school board members and attendees. As Newport News Public Schools continues on their journey 2025, to ensure that all students graduate, career, college, and citizen-ready, I will offer you a poem titled "The Miracle of Morning" by wordsmith, changemaker, and poet Amanda Gorman. It is my hope that these words will convey my feelings of this past year and bring hope, kindness, and it will emerge even stronger. "The Miracle of Morning." I thought I'd awaken to a world in mourning, heavy clouds crowding, a society storming, but there's something different on this golden morning, something magical in the sunlight wide and warming. I see a dad in a stroller taking a jog across the street, a bright-eyed girl chases her dog, a grandma on a porch fingers her rosaries, she grins as her young neighbor brings her groceries. While we might feel small, separate, and all alone, our people have never been more closely tethered. The question isn't if we can weather this unknown, but how we will weather this unknown together. So on this meaningful morn, we mourn and we mend, like light, we can't be broken even when we bend. As one, we will defeat both despair and disease, we stand with healthcare heroes, and all employees with families, libraries, waiters, schools, artists, businesses, restaurants, and hospitals hit hardest. We ignite not in the light but in lack thereof, for it is in loss that we truly learn to love. In this chaos, we will discover clarity, in suffering, we must find solidarity, for it's our grief that gives us our gratitude, shows us how to find hope if we ever lose it. So ensure that this ache wasn't endured in vain. Do not ignore the pain, give it purpose, use it. Read children's books, dance alone to DJ music, know that this distance will make our hearts grow fonder. From these waves of woes, our world will emerge stronger. We'll observe how the burdens braved by humankind are also the moments that make us humans kind. Let us each morning find us courageous, brought closer, heating the light before us before the fight is over. When this ends, we'll smile sweetly, finally seeing, in testing times, we became the best of beings. Please stand with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for those powerful words this morning. Thank you so much for that. And congratulations again on your recognition as Newport News Teacher of the Year. I know you will represent Newport News well next year as we move forward into our new school year. Our first item on the agenda is the board organization. At this time, the school board will elect a chairman for the 2021-2022 school year. Are there any nominations at this time?
Mr. Superintendent, I recommend that I nominate Mr. Douglas Brown as the chair for this upcoming year.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any further nominations or any additional nominations? Hearing no further nominations. Nominations for the office of chairman, Mr. Brown, do you accept that nomination?
I accept.
Okay. Now, Mr. Brown has been nominated to serve as the 2021-2022 school board chairman. Is there any discussion regarding the nomination? Okay. Hearing none, please call the roll. This is Buffalo.
Mrs. Ayman?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
And Mr. Brown, congratulations. Let's give him a round of applause. Weight of a board chairman carries is a heavy gavel, and I now relinquish this gavel to Mr. Brown. Congratulations, sir, and I will turn the meeting over to your charge.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. It's a great honor and I look forward to serving with all of you and look forward to a 2021-22 school year that's going to be even better than what we had last year. At this time, we're going to now elect a vice chair for the 2021-22 school year. Are there any nominations? Yes, Mr. Hunter.
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Lisa Searls Law as the vice chair for this upcoming year.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Ms. Searls Law has been nominated. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, I hear a second from Dr. Best. Any other nominations? All right, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Brown will close the nomination for vice chair.
We will now take a motion to close the nomination.
Okay. Mrs. Ayman?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Congratulations. Well, Ms. Searls Law has been selected as the 2021-22 school board vice chair. Congratulations, and we look forward to continuing our work together and serving in this year. That will now move us on to Section 2, which is the consent agenda. That includes 2.01, minutes from the joint meeting with City Council on May 25, 2021, 2.02, minutes from the special meeting on June 1, 2021, 2.03, appointment of the clerk and deputy clerks of the school board, 2.04, appointment of the agents and deputy agents of the school board, 2.05, appointment of person to serve in the absence of the superintendent, 2.06, reimbursement resolution for Virginia Public School Authority funding technology purchases, 2.07, impact aid authorization, 2.08, 21-22 out-of-division student tuition at $5,364.00, 2.09, 2021-22 tuition rate for non-Virginian resident students at $10,472.00 and 0 cents, and 2.10, authorization of signature in the absence of the division superintendent for Enterprise Academy. At this time, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ayman. Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Okay, I just want to make a clarification for the 21-22 out-of-division school tuition, $5,461.
Okay.
Okay.
So, Madam Vice Chair, the motion is your motion for $5,400?
$61.
And $61?
And $61, yes.
For 2.08?
Yes, for 2.08.
All right, thank you. All right, then, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Ayman?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, thank you. Then the next item on our agenda is Section 3, our action item. That's going to be 3.01, Rights and Responsibilities Handbook Revisions. And Dr. Parker, do you have a few words on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I received one comment from the board regarding a line item in the handbook on page 30, and I will be reviewing that item with staff. It is in reference to the comparison of vulgar language or hate speech and dispositions associated with anything that would be derogatory towards another student, such as a slur. We're talking about the way, and there's concern about consistency of those two items and how we handle them. I will be happy to take that back to our discipline team to discuss and review. What I would ask the board to do is that this should not slow down the work. If there's an adjustment needed, we could make that over the summer as we prepare the handbook for distribution. But on page 30, that was the only concern. I received that from Mrs. Ayman. Ma'am, if you have any comments regarding that, I'll be happy to put a board certification.
Sure. And I don't have it right in front of me, but on page 30, there were two categories of students saying something that had different categories for intervention for K through five. So my thought was that we would want to make those consistent. In fact, the vulgarity and profanity had a lower level than the others. So my recommendation would be that we consider making both level two. As kids mature, they learn more about the import of what they say, so we may want two and then three for the upper grades for both.
And I will be happy to bring that back to the discipline committee for discussion as we finalize the document. Mr. Chairman, I believe that the corrections to the document from comparison between last year and this year have been provided to the board, and I would ask that the board still consider today to move forward with the student handbook for preparation in the fall.
So then, at this time, we would entertain a motion to approve the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook with additional review from the superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook revisions as presented with updates.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Ayman. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes. I just wanted to thank the team for the revisions in the handbook and being able to provide for us an opportunity to see laying them side by side. It showed up on our doorstep in beautiful colors, red and green, so we were able to see. And that really does show for us as a board the direction that we're moving in. It shows where we've been and where we're trying to go. And I really am very, very excited about the way our handbook reads now. I feel like it is very, very inclusive. And, Ms. Ayman, thank you for page 30.
All right, thank you. Any further comments? All right, there being none, and Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Ayman?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. So now we'll move on to Section 4, Reports and Information. 4.01 is the Annual Notice Regarding the Available School Board Policies and Procedures Manual. This announcement will serve as the required annual public notice that copies of the School Board Policies and Procedures Manual are available to the public and employees in the library of each Newport News public, in each Newport News Public Library and online on the Policies and Procedures website at www.nnschools.org/policies and on the NNS Internet. Next on our agenda is 4.02, which will be comments by the superintendent. Dr. Parker, please take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And before I begin my comments, Mrs. Hotts, could you approach the bench? So I'll make sure I'm in order today.
Yes, sir. Oh.
So we approved the consent agenda.
We're going to go back after closed session. We're coming back in there, and there's a note that says we're going to approve it.
All right, well, I'm in order. I just want to make sure I'm straight this morning. Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity for comments. I'm looking forward to a new school year, and I want to welcome our, thank our Teacher of the Year for being here, so proud of your accomplishments and look forward to working with you in the upcoming year. We're looking forward to welcoming more students back in September, and we're rapidly moving forward with that. Summer school starts next week, and thank you for a dedicated school board as we prepare our students to be college, career, and citizen-ready. Fair share, Minchfield High School's Lead for Change Team is one of six national grand prize winners recognized for their service to their school and community. So we want to congratulate our Minchfield team for their recognitions. The Lead for Change Student Leadership Program was awarded $10,000, and they will donate half of the prize to Thrive Peninsula, which offers food, financial support, and other services to local families. The remaining prize money will support Minchfield's garden, food pantry, and other projects. In the last six years, Minchfield's Lead for Change Team has received $62,000 in award money that is shared with local nonprofits. That is phenomenal. Congratulations to Minchfield High School's Lead for Change Team. Some other congratulatory notes this morning. The biggest one is our Community Relations Team. Our Community Relations Team was not awarded one or two or three awards, which some of the local school divisions were awarded. They were awarded eight national awards for this past year's work. So they earned eight awards in the 2021 National School Public Relations Association's Communications Awards Contest. So to be awarded, we submitted several entries of the work that our school communications team was doing, and here are those items that were awarded a national prize. The Return to Learn Weekly Report that the school division generated weekly during the pandemic, Journey 2025 Branding and Packaging, the Newport News Public Schools Heroes Column published in the Oyster Pointer, the Return to Learn Plan Handbook, our website was also nationally recognized, and three social media campaigns, including our Facebook Live sessions. Our Community Relations Team earned more awards this year than any other school division in our region. I'd like to congratulate the entire team who worked tirelessly, many nights, 7, 8, 9 o'clock, for these awards and their hard work. And let's give them a round of applause for their efforts to contribute to communication. Last week, we also held our annual summer leadership retreat at Todd Stadium. All of our school administrators were in attendance. We were fortunate to have Dr. John Gordon, the superintendent of Suffolk Public Schools and president of schools, to be the keynote speaker. And for the occasion, employees in the administration building also joined us for a picnic lunch and had some fun playing some games and activities. It was a very nice day, the weather was great, and our administrators deserved that treat. Thank you for our leadership team, our school leadership team, for coordinating that event. In honor of her retirement, the Teaching and Learning Team hosted a reception yesterday for Mrs. Mary Keeling, our supervisor of Library Media Services, and she is an institution in this school division and very well-respected around the state for her work in Library Media Services. Mrs. Keeling has over 25 years of dedicated service to Newport News Public Schools. During her tenure, she expanded our library collections, and mostly recently, she launched a partnership with the Newport News Public Library System to ensure that every student has a library card, and we'd like to wish Mrs. Keeling a happy retirement. As a reminder, all schools and offices will be closed on Monday, July 5, in observance of the Independence Day holiday, and we will kick off our Summer Spark program the following day on July 6, where nearly 2,000 elementary and middle school students will join us for the first day of Spark at schools around the city. The high school summer sessions started on Monday. This summer, we are serving nearly 4,000 students in various Spark programs. And finally, we are now in our summer schedule, so all schools and offices are closed on Fridays through August 20. I wish everyone a relaxing and rejuvenating summer, and I encourage everyone to take a well-deserved break and enjoy some summer activities. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. All right, well, we will now then move on to Item 5, which is an opportunity to hear from the public. The school board recognizes that some members of the public may not be able to join us in person. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via web form, email, or voicemail up to 30 minutes prior to our meeting, time to be included in the official meeting record. For those of you joining us in person, the board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments, not to respond. Please understand that we will consider your concerns and get back to you at a later time. We ask that you comply with our three-minute time limit. As you begin your comments, a green light will come on, a yellow light signals that you have 30 seconds remaining, and a red light indicates that your time is up. As your name is called, please come forward. And I do have one card at this time. All right, Mr. Matthew Degrave.
Good morning, everybody. It's a great day today. So I wanted to talk to you about a thing that is coming up that is becoming embroiled in a lot of controversy, critical race theory. I believe it's imperative that we teach students about the difficulties that people of color have faced in the U.S. in the past and today. Racism is not always easily identified, boogeyman that everybody can see or hang on to, like the obvious racist from the Charlottesville fame, neo-Nazis and neo-Confederates. But the really sinister form of racism is the constant-changing systems of racism that are just out of view. For example, the GI Bill of World War II, veterans were, the funds for that were unequally distributed to veterans. People that served in the U.S., black Americans who served in the U.S., were shut out of systems that were put into place for supposedly everybody that served our country. White people actively thwarted these attempts for black veterans to benefit from these programs. To many, this may seem like forever ago, but this act prevented black families from building the generational wealth that we see today. I don't mean that all white World War II veterans are rich, but they certainly had access to many more resources than their black counterparts. Because of this access, it allowed their offspring to attend better schools while systems of racism continue for people of color. There may be many, probably mostly white, parents that are angry about this education. You may get threats of being removed, or parents that say that they're going to run against you. This outburst of anger is a reaction that I recently found out is termed white fragility. The term comes from the book from Robin DiAngelo by the same name. I'd like to read a short passage if I have time. It says, "Given how seldom we experience racial discomfort," and by "we," white people is most often what's referred to. "We experience racial discomfort in society. We dominate. We haven't had to build our racial stamina. Socialized into deep internalized sense of superiority that we are either unaware of or can never admit to ourselves, we become highly fragile in conversations about race. We consider our challenge to our racial worldview as a challenge to our very identity as good moral people. Thus, we perceive any attempt to connect us with the systems of racism as unsettling and unfair moral offense. We need to break this cycle and start building our children's racial stamina. This will allow our children to become better, caring people. Nothing in this curriculum that I have seen teaches the current generation of white people are bad. Racism is everywhere, biases are everywhere, but we need to understand that we need to face these biases and to be able to talk about this openly with people. And until we get over white fragility, that will never happen, and I believe that will happen in the next generation if we teach." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Degrave. Are there any other cards?
No, sir.
Okay. There being no further cards, then we will move on. Thank you for your comments and thoughts this morning. We'll now move to matters by the school board, and we will begin with Dr. Best.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Just a few comments. Again, a special thank you to all of the teachers and the staff for a just fantastic school year, and we are appreciative of your hard work, and I just want you all to know that. If you have an opportunity, take a minute, take a break, catch your breath, and get recharged because we're looking for great things for the upcoming school year. And I think Dr. Parker mentioned that the summer session has begun. I actually had a child that was supposed to begin the summer session, but for whatever reason, she didn't. But everything appeared to be going well, and I'd like to also give a special thanks to those teachers that took on the task of working for the summer session. For teachers, boys and girls, parents, anyone out there listening, just find you something good to read this summer. Reading can take you places that you've never been, it can give you ideas you've never had, it can motivate, it can encourage, it can uplift. So I have probably about 10 books I'm excited about reading this summer, and I just encourage you to do the same. And then finally, congratulations to our chair and vice chair on your reelection. We thank you for your leadership, and we're looking forward to even greater things this school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Best. All right, Mr. Ely.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for the presentations we got today. Congratulations to the Teacher of the Year. I know you're going to continue to do wonderful things for Newport News, and congratulations to our chair and vice chair. Y'all did a very great time, did a very great job doing lead us through the pandemic, and I need to continue to do a great job leading us through the rest of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. All right, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I would like to congratulate Teacher of the Year. Looking forward to working with you. Also, thank you to all the hard work from staff and especially the last year's students. I think they set a model moving forward, and also administration. Also, congratulations again to Madam Vice Chair and Mr. Chair for your reelection or reappointment or however you want to put it. You know, I've always said that during tough times is when you find out who people really are, you know, when everything is nice and the storm is calm, as they say, you know, I guess we all can shine. But, you know, during the last year, and I don't want to reflect too much, but during the last year, we had a lot of decisions to make for the school division. And I like to use my famous word is COA, courses of action, and I stress that a lot about having multiple plans for actions. And I think the pandemic brought that out, that, you know, we must continue to plan even though, you know, we may not know the answer down the road. But, Mr. Chairman, you were steady in your resolve and leadership. You never know when you might get a call from the chairman, but he always wanted, you know, input, and he was ready to give his, you know, his answer. So I want to applaud you for all the leadership that you've shown over the last year. I really appreciate that. And just want to, you know, wish the kids coming up, the students coming up this year, that, you know, we're looking forward to working with you. You have a lot to look forward to as far as the leadership, and just looking forward to working with the board again. I think we've been through a lot and struggled a lot, and I think we came out on the other side, I would think, well. So I really appreciate all the support and effort. And that's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. All right, Ms. Ayman.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, and I also want to offer my congratulations to Mr. Brown and Mrs. Searls Law for another year as chairman and vice chair. I think it's only appropriate that after last year, you guys have a hopefully much more normal year for your leadership team. I look forward to that, and congratulations, Ms. Emblech. Great music teacher, and I think it's wonderful that you got Teacher of the Year. I'm looking forward to seeing how all your students grow next year. And I'll keep my comments brief. Likewise, I'm looking forward to a much more normal year, excited to see what Newport News Schools do in the coming year. Just encourage students, teachers, families to take a break and come back, ready to hit the ground running in September.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Ayman. And Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I always start off, great things are happening in Newport News Public Schools. Again, congratulations to you and the vice chair for your appointment. I agree, tough time last year, so hopefully you'll have a more normal, you know, chair and vice chair this year with all schools open five days a week with all kids attending in-person class. Again, Emblech, congratulations to you. I know you are a gem at Riverside Elementary School. Great job, and my wife says hello, and she's going to miss you. Again, Dr. Best, as Dr. Best says, go out and read a book, magazine, you know, take a trip, you know, somewhere far. Doesn't have to be a long book, doesn't have to be a deep book, fictional or nonfictional, but just go out and read and really sit back and relax. It's been a tough year for all of our students and our teachers, and find some time just to do nothing. And what I mean, do nothing, just sit back, do nothing, read a book, take a nap, and enjoy. enjoy summer. And we look forward to an upcoming and productive and prosperous new year. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. All right, Madam Vice Chair, Mrs. Searls Law.
Well, thank you. Well, I'll start with a humble thank you to the board for the vote of confidence to serve in this seat for this upcoming school year. I must say, Mr. Brown drives a tight ship, and I enjoy being on that ship, so it's an honor to be able to support. I cannot tell you how many times I've referred back to the roles of the vice chair that the SBA lays out for us so that we could do the best we could do for Newport News Public Schools. So thank you for that. Misty, I am so proud of you. It's going to be fun seeing you at the events that we have where Teacher of the Year shows up, so we look forward to that relationship. I think I, you know, have the same sentiment as everybody on the board. That's what we need to do. We need to rest, recharge, restore, so that we can remain focused when we come back. But take a break first. For our students, they have done an amazing job through this. And our teachers, I can't even begin to say what type of job they've done. They have just been absolutely phenomenal. And so as we move forward, I know we're looking for a normal school year, but the work is really going to be there because we're coming back to a system that we want to make better than it was when we left, taking into account what we went through last year and a little of the year before. So I am just so honored to be part of the Newport News family, and I wish everyone a restful, restful summer.
All right. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Well, so I promise I won't cry this time, you know, like I did in June. So that was the end of the year, so this is going to be the beginning of the year. And I'm just looking forward to, again, working as hard as I possibly can with all of you. And I know last year, what we said to each other is, every day we challenge each other, how can we be better? And we'll continue that work of being better every day. We reflect back on this year. Our communications has received national recognition. That's no accident through the work that was put in. Ms. Imbleach, congratulations again. I know you're here being Teacher of the Year. We're so merry about, just like the children, are looking forward to the face-to-face interactions we're going to be able to have this year. We're going to get back to having our parade, our Denby Day Parade, and having our Southeast Community Day Parade. Kids will be back in school. Kids, we know that you miss being in school, and it was good to hear how much you all miss being in school and know that we missed having you in school. And so we're looking forward to having all your faces and seeing you back in. Summer school, please take advantage of that, all right? Because getting better every day, that's the same thing the board's going to be doing. That's your chance to get better in summer school and get prepared for this upcoming year. We're going to do, roll up our sleeves and work hard and start talking about how we can challenge each other and be better. That's going to go with our summer retreat. We'll do that in August, challenging each other and being better and improving on the work that we did from last year. So with that, I believe we do have a closed motion, a motion to go into closed session at this time. Madam Vice Chair, do you have a motion to read?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Motion for closed meeting. The school board may convene a closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, subsection 1, for the purpose of considering prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, or promotion, and discussing the performance of a specific public officer.
All right. Heard the motion. Is there a second? Second. All right, second by Mr. Harris. Any questions or discussion? There being none, then Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Four.
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 Mr. Harris.
Four.
Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, so at this time, then we will move over into the school board conference room for a short closed session. Well, welcome back. At this time, may I have a motion to approve our personnel recommendations?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve our recommendations.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, second by Dr. Best. Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Ammon?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
And Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right. Thank you. All right, well, Dr. Parker, would you please introduce our personnel recommendations?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is a pleasure to introduce the following appointments for this upcoming school year. And as in typical fashion, Newport News, we see our faculty and staff and our families as a family. And I can see plenty of supporters here in the audience to support these appointments today, and I thank you for being here and joining us. I'd like to introduce our first appointee is Ms. Lenise Cowling, the new program administrator at Heritage High School. And if you could stand when your name is called, thank you. Now, Ms. Cowling has a bachelor's degree in business education from Norfolk State University, go Spartans, and is working on a master's degree in education from Old Dominion University. Ms. Cowling began her career as a CTE teacher in 2013. She spent one year in Hampton City Schools before moving to Newport News Public Schools, the right place. She was, she served as a business teacher, co-op coordinator, and lead teacher at Heritage High School. Ms. Cowling is currently serving as the acting program administrator of the University Magnet and Governor STEM Academy. Ms. Cowling is excited to take on this role permanently at Heritage High School, and we thank you for stepping up and taking on a leadership role. Do you have anyone with you today you'd like to recognize as you introduce yourself?
Oh, yes, I'd like to recognize my mother, my daughter, my son, my sister, and my husband.
Well, thank you. Thank you, and thank you for your leadership. We look forward to working with you in a greater capacity at Heritage High School.
Thank you.
Our next appointee, I'd like to introduce, Mrs. Mary Hardesty, the new assistant principal for instruction at Minchville High School. Ms. Hardesty has a bachelor's degree in family and consumer science with a concentration in elementary education, a master's degree in education from the University of Virginia, an educational specialist degree in educational leadership from Old Dominion University, and is awaiting the conferral of her PhD in education from Old Dominion University. Ms. Hardesty has worked as a middle school math teacher in Shenador County Public Schools, Suffolk Public Schools, and Newport News Public Schools, and as a mathematics specialist in Shenador County Public Schools and Virginia Beach Public Schools. She returned to Newport News Public Schools in 2018 to begin her administrative career as an assistant principal at Denby High School. Thank you, Mrs. Hardesty, for taking on this opportunity. Would you like to introduce your supporters today as you address the board?
Yes, thank you for this opportunity. My parents live in the suburbs here with me, just went to the over there, and one who cannot be in here, and that's why I'm in for Dr. Elmo Bluff.
Look forward to your leadership. Our next appointee is Ms. Lindsay Comfort, and she is joining Newport News Public Schools as a secondary assistant principal at Woodside High School. She currently serves as an administrative assistant at Ocean Lakes High School and Virginia Beach Public Schools. Ms. Comfort previously served as an instructional technology specialist, a STEM grant specialist, and math teacher in Virginia Beach, and as a math teacher and department chair in Henrico County Public Schools. She has a bachelor's degree in human services counseling from Old Dominion University, a master's degree in leadership and supervision from the University of Virginia. We are pleased to welcome Ms. Comfort to the Newport News Public Schools team. Good morning. Join us, Ms. Comfort. Do you have any supporters here today as you introduce yourself?
I do. My biggest champion, my husband, is here, and my youngest of my two kids, Alexandra, is with me today. Again, thank you. I'm excited to have an opportunity with you guys.
Look forward to it. Thank you for joining us. And our next appointee, I'd like to introduce Brandy Wills, the new assistant principal at Denby High School. And Ms. Wills started her career in Odessa, Texas in 1997. She came to the peninsula in 2001, teaching physical education in York County Public Schools, Hampton City Public Schools, and Newport News Public Schools. Ms. Wills has served as a lead teacher at Huntington Middle School, Heritage High Schools, and is currently at Woodside High School. Well-traveled. Ms. Wills holds a bachelor's and master's degree in kinesiology from Angelo State University, and a second master's degree in educational administration from Grand Canyon University. And she is currently working on an additional degree in special education at Grand Canyon University. Ms. Wills is excited to expand her experiences in this new role in Newport News. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you for joining us. And do you have any supporters here with you this morning?
Yes, sir. I have my daughter here, I have my good friend here, and I have my mentor, Dr. Kathy Baker, over there, and my ward family. I think everybody is my.
You've worked everywhere.
Yes, so I'm glad to be here, and I'm ready to serve.
Thank you. Congratulations. Awesome. Our next appointee is Dr. Karen Blizzard, as the new director of school counseling. Dr. Blizzard started her career counseling, her counseling career in Newport News Public Schools in 2001. At, oh, I'm sorry, she started her career in Newport News Public Schools in 2001 at Jackson Academy Alternative Middle School. And she had to explain to me what, Jackson Academy. She then spent four years in the Los Angeles Unified School District before returning to Newport News Public Schools. She has served as a school counselor at Jenkins Elementary School, Woodside High School, Dozier Middle, and Dozier Middle School. Dr. Blizzard has a bachelor's degree in government sociology from the University of Virginia, a master's degree in school counseling from Old Dominion University, and a PhD in counseling, education, and supervision from Old Dominion University. Dr. Blizzard also has worked as an adjunct professor at Old Dominion University and Liberty University. Dr. Blizzard is excited to continue her journey with the teaching and learning team. Good morning, and thank you for being here, and congratulations on your appointment. Do you have any supporters here as you introduce yourself?
I do, and I'm so excited to join the team. I have my parents, Jereline and John Coles, and one of my mentors from Dozier, Dr. Kathy Baker.
Awesome. Awesome. Congratulations, folks. And you have big shoes to fill, so we look forward to your leadership, and thank you for joining us this morning. Our next appointee, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jason Holler. Did I pronounce that correctly? Holler? Yes, you did. As assistant principal for instruction at Denby High School. Mr. Holler started his career in 2008 as a sports medicine teacher and athletic trainer at Minchville High School, and he has served as a lead teacher and on numerous committees while at Minchville. He then began his administrative career as a program administrator, and this is where you may remember him most, as the IB coordinator and governor's health sciences administrator at Warwick High School. Mr. Holler has a bachelor's degree in health sciences from James Madison University, a master's degree in education with a concentration in athletic training education, and research from Old Dominion University, an educational specialist degree in educational leadership and administration from George Washington University, and is currently a doctoral candidate in education, leadership, and administration at George Washington University. And Mr. Holler is excited to start his new role at Denby High School. I didn't know about this one until recently. Now I have some shoes to fill over at Warwick over there. Yes, we do, because he does everything over there. Good man. So I'm surprised and thrilled this morning as well, probably as surprised as you are. They didn't tell me. I was over, now here's the thing, I was over there a few weeks ago, and they didn't mention any of this to me. Thank you very much for that. So, Mr. Holler, do you have any supporters here? I see your fearless principal in front of you, but do you have other supporters here this morning, too?
I do. I'm so excited about this new opportunity. I have Shane Laser right there, and I have my family, my work family from Warwick High School that are here also to support me, and also my new principal that I'll be working for. Very excited.
Well, you've done great work at Warwick High School, and I wouldn't expect any different in your new digs, so thank you so much for taking on a greater leadership role, and let's give them a round of applause. So our next appointee, I'd like to introduce William Gregg Huffstettler, as the new assistant principal for operations at Minchville High School. Mr. Huffstettler started his career in Newport News Public Schools in 2005 as a science teacher at Denby High School. He began his administrative careers in, excuse me, an assistant principal at Denby, and then moved to Crittenton Middle School, where he developed the master schedule along with other duties as an assistant principal. So Mr. Huffstettler holds a degree, a bachelor's degree in biology from Christopher Newport University, a master's degree in secondary education from Old Dominion University, and an educational specialist degree in educational leadership from Old Dominion University. He is looking forward to joining the Minchville team, filling some big shoes, coming in as the operations administrator. Good morning, and congratulations, sir. Let's give him a round of applause. And Huffstettler, would you introduce your supporters this morning?
Good morning. I just want to say thank you to my best friend for being here, Michael. My wonderful, beautiful, all the things she told me to say, stepdaughter Michaela. You might know her, Michelle Huffstettler, my wife. I just want to say I love Newport News Public Schools and thank you for picking me.
So that concludes our appointees this morning. We had a few administrative transfers that will be included in the minutes to this meeting, Mr. Chairman. And at this time, I will conclude my remarks. Thank you, Dr. Parker. Well, congratulations to all of you, and there being no other business, we will call this meeting adjourned.